Of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, board members, are there any modifications to the agenda tonight? All right, hearing none, we'll be moving into a closed session right away. So Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn to closed session pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act, exemption five ILCS 120, part two, part C, part one.
So motioned.
Move by Mr. Jerpy, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hutchison, sorry, Ms. Colovitz, Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. The meeting is adjourned to closed session. Action is expected following the closed session. All right, we are reconvenienced open session. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. All right, we have two action items on the agenda. So Board, I need a motion to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of remedial warning to tenured teacher Scott Hanson.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Colovitz, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. So Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing issuance of remedial warning to tenured teacher John Hellman.
So motioned.
Move by Mr. Jerpy?
Second.
Second by Ms. Colovitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right, Board, I need a motion and a second to suspend the rules and adjourn to a workshop setting. So moved. Moved by Mr. Long, second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Colovitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Board, we have two topics, information topics tonight, the first of which is Vision 2026. Dr. Schuler would like to introduce the topic.
I will. Actually, if it's okay, I'm sure we're going to do the middle school capital project discussion first. So we have Mike Dolter here from Perkins at Will. He is the lead architect that has been working with our buildings on development of the concept plans for the middle school capital projects. We have spent quite a bit of time with your facilities committee very recently, with the facilities committee reviewing some of the information that's going to come in front of you. So I'm going to hand it immediately over to Mr. Dolter to take the board through some updated concepts and some potential project schedules for the middle school projects.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Good evening, Board. Thanks for having me here today. It's great to be back in front of you to talk through the middle school projects. We've had some good time with principals discussing the overall concepts, getting additional feedback, making sure that we come to a good consolidated position from each one of the schools. You should have in front of you a packet that includes the current state of those concepts, as well as some additional project schedule information that we'll walk through here. So why don't we advance to the next slide if we could? So as I said, the first topic to discuss is the updated concept diagrams. We've had, again, a few working sessions with each one of the school's principals, and we plan on some additional engagement with the staff and faculty over each one of the schools as we continue to develop the concepts and get additional information added into these. So, next slide. So starting off here, you have a diagram updated of Monroe. If you remember back when we were last with you, we presented a few different options to look at for Monroe. We were looking at a sort of a low-middle-high approach to things. We've taken and worked through to consolidate sort of the best approach as identified by the schools from those. This, each one of these options, you're going to see some pieces from the middle concept, some pieces from the high concept that really reflect what the current thinking is from each one of the schools here. So one of the main things that you'll see at Monroe still is the, at the northeast corner, north is up on the page. Northwest corner, I apologize, is an outline for a potential new performing arts facility that includes the ancillary band orchestra and music instructional spaces adjacent to it. That takes place in what is currently a parking lot as well as facilities trailer out in that area. The idea would be to also provide some additional storage for the building out there. We're also looking to offset what is currently a locker room area out in that space. So that, you'd have a blue box immediately to the right of that purple area here that says new PE locker rooms and support space. So that's consolidating all the locker rooms in the facility into that one space. The benefit there also is that we're able to increase, to improve the circulation, which is kind of a common theme between each one of the schools, is to improve circulation for movement within the building as well as sightlines and security throughout. If you look at the northeast corner of the building, you'll see there are two science labs that were, if you remember in the previous diagrams, one option was to put a small expansion to the building in order to right-size the science labs. This concept does all of that work within the existing footprint of the building. So no anticipated addition to the building in this case. We're using district-wide standards for all of the science labs, and science labs are a large focus of the overall project to make sure that there's parity amongst all of the schools when we talk about size and condition and facilities for science. In this case, because there are science labs in two locations, one, those two area on the northeast corner in the sixth grade wing and then immediately adjacent to the library learning center, there's other orange boxes there. Those, we were able to right-size in place by offsetting some existing storage facilities there. So there is a concept shown here where we're consolidating central science storage and prep up by the sixth grade wing as well. There'll be some additional work on updating the library learning center, providing a dedicated maker space as well. Taking what is the existing theater, small theater space up down on the south end of the building, updating that for a multi-purpose space, making that more into a flat floor facility so that you can have the drama classrooms as needed and other uses to flex for multiple uses throughout school use and after-hours use as well. Updating the entry and circulation in the front end as also consolidating student services. Another major priority at all three schools is looking at how student services, that includes wellness and itinerant services, are either consolidated or dealt with throughout those schools to make sure that there is a dedicated facility for those. Sometimes they have been, just because of the added services that have happened over the time that weren't originally planned for in the building, they've taken kind of any piece, any place that is available to them around the building. So providing opportunities to have dedicated space for those is very important. At Monroe, distinct from the other two schools, there is a self-contained essentials program, which is a special education program that is outside of the standard distributed special education program. After extensive work with the program director as well as the school, the approach to this was really looking at how we can provide a centralized location for that severe and profound special education program at a consolidated location here with the additional services that are necessary for that program. Occupational therapy, physical therapy, and as well as a life skills lab that is available for that program right adjacent to it.
So I have a question about that part of things.
Yeah, sure.
So I know for life skills, those students do things like use kitchen settings. Is there still transiting across the school to get to that or would this space encompass then that sort of facility?
That's right. The life skills lab would have a kitchen component to it as part of that. So we view that as one of the pieces that would be in there. We look forward to going through some additional programming where we can identify the other components that will be necessary for that. But definitely it would be something there, yes.
Since we're, is it okay to ask questions? So is there any consideration to taking that green section there and maybe like swapping it with this? This section and the section here? I know, sorry. So the green and like swapping it with this and this section here, like, so the middle one here. Like bringing the special ed populization into like more of the central location and kind of pushing these. Not even sure what that says. Oh, exploratory labs? Like out to the outer side and maybe the teacher's lounge, like swapping. No, not. No, this part here.
Yeah, the, I think the.
Oh, the kitchen here, okay.
Yeah. I think the, you know, after we had worked with the special education director at the school as well as the district director, there was really a hope that we'd be able to provide a good location that has the right-sized classrooms for the program there. The essentials program has those five classrooms. They're all, all need to have a larger size than a standard classroom. The exploratory lab area is a little too small for that, and they all wanted to be as close to them as they possibly could. The other benefit for their current location is that they're on outside walls, so they have access to natural light in those spaces. There, you know, we have, we have gone back and forth on if the essentials program wants to be a distributed program throughout the school so that it wasn't a single isolated pod within the building or if it wanted to be configured as shown. And really, after exploring both of those options, this was the kind of direction that we were, that seemed to be the best fit from the user end. So I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. And I understand the desire to consolidate the program for staff to have the resources and each other together. Just having been in the building, it seems very pushed off to the side rather than centrally located and part of, like, most of the student classes are here on the east side.
Right.
And then they're like in the far corner of.
Yeah.
The left side or the west side.
Yeah. And I think one of the benefits there is that the, the essentials program also makes good use of a lot of the functions around it. From the exploratory labs to the art classrooms, there's good connections between there. By no stretch of the imagination do we want to isolate them from being visible from the rest of the school or being part of the rest of the school community. It's something that I think we'll have to continue to explore how that can best work from an architectural side and from a program side as we keep on moving forward here. So the essential, the exploratory labs, those take place where the current music and choral spaces are. So those are nice high base spaces. The idea behind the exploratory labs, and you'll see this in each one of the three schools, is providing those multi-purpose flexible curricular spaces that can change as necessary as curriculum changes for other programs that are connected to CTE or Family and Super Sciences. Whatever those programs start to work and they have the utilities that are available for them. As they change over time, as the programs get more and more defined, they can take place in those spaces and have flexible changing use for those components as well. So there's, please.
One question also because I'm familiar with the building, but that existing auditorium that's in the front of the building?
Yes.
Where is that on here?
The yellow, the yellow box in the south, the very bottom of the page there with the rounded corners flared, that's the, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the, because that's a little bit undersized for a realistic performing arts facility, we still want to maintain that in its public location and make it as flexible as possible. We've had some discussions about potentially expanding that into the footprint to the north of there. We want to have some additional discussions on how that space should be used as we keep on going through the process here. Yeah. So any additional questions at Monroe? I'll say that there's, there's a lot of the deferred maintenance, the physical components, the improvements to circulation space and general classrooms that are not highlighted in color here but are still continuing to be part of the process as we move there. We want to make sure that we're updating building systems as we're moving through here. We're looking at each individual classroom to make sure that we establish a standard for those classrooms that's distributed throughout each one of the schools as well.
Relative to building systems?
Yes.
Does update gym flooring bleachers aesthetics, does it not include climate control work for the gym?
It would. And I think that's kind of an umbrella for each one of the schools. It's a good point that we'd be looking at the HVAC needs because we have some older systems here, and we want to make sure that we're updating those as we move through here too.
And then my only other question. Early on in the process, there had been some feedback from a number of community members about, you know, potentially Monroe serving as space for the broader community, being able to leverage some of the facilities for other purposes. And then from a district perspective, that potentially that could be revenue generating. The performing arts and theater space here, am I interpreting the diagram correctly that there is an entrance directly adjacent to that so that if there were other users of that facility, they wouldn't have to go through the whole school to get there?
It's, it's, yes, you are, you're seeing that because from an egress standpoint, we'd need to have some exits on either side of that performing arts center, the new theater space. Generally speaking, the majority of the parking at Monroe is down on the south side, and as it operates right now from a public, from for public and community use, that center common space is pretty well open. And what we're doing, what we're hoping to do there is, as you see the arrows, we're providing those north-south corridors that allow better access without having to go over into either one of the wings on the side there. And it also provides good access back to that performing arts facility too. There's a drop-off, there's some additional accessible parking over there. The drop-off would help with the essentials program as well on a day-to-day basis. The drop-off can help for deliveries and other individuals who will be using that performing arts facility as well. So I think there's really, you know, kind of inherent community base built into that as well.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, so the essentials program is going to have a different entrance?
It's, it's something that was, that was a desire, was to have the ability to have a separated, to have a dedicated entry for that program from everything that we've heard on that too.
Only entry point, the suits would be used a lot in suits in the essentials program for transportation. So that specifically, why would you vote to move them to the back to allow for a good safe security?
Any other questions at Monroe? Okay. We can go on to Edison next. So Edison, two-floor building. You'll see some changes here. The diagram at Edison has really focused more towards the mid-concept than the high concept with a notable addition through our discussions. I'll start on this diagram really at the bottom right-hand corner, which is the southeast side of campus. A new blue box that you see there is intended to show a potential for a replacement gymnasium for the facility. Since Edison doesn't have a competition-sized gym, the real need there was to address that. We had talked about potentially bringing locker rooms up from the basement in order to address some of the needs in those areas too. Really, the focus was more on the gymnasium space. So providing a more of a flexible, multi-purpose gym here was more of the priority from that end. Immediately to the left on the page from that, you'll see some marked areas for additional toilet rooms. This was more of a security issue than necessarily a servicing issue for the gyms. Since those are used by the public, you're able to cordon off the rest of the building from the public access spaces if you're able to provide sufficient toilet rooms in this area. Currently, there's only one set of toilet rooms, one toilet room in this area. So we're showing a placeholder identifying that as a need in this zone in general.
Is that new gym, existing space?
There is a small gym there currently.
But I mean, where you have the blue in the right, that's.
Right. Yes. There is a, there is an expansion of the building footprint at that.
Building out, new building.
It's new building, yes.
Thank you.
And we're, you know, as, because it is a hypothetical right now, we're fairly certain it sits within a good place on the property, but we have a really tight property line at Edison as at Edison and Franklin have some challenges on the site overall. So we'll continue that study there. But the idea here is to provide a regulation-sized competition gymnasium for Edison at that location. So pre, go.
Sorry. So you're adding the bathrooms so that when there's an activity occurring in the gym that's outside open to the public? So would they enter, would the public enter way in the back of the school?
They would, I think as it typically is right now, I believe they're entering from the parking on the west side through the doors just off the cafeteria, if I'm correct. Trying to think of that right now.
I think that's right. Okay. But there's, in the parking in the front, so they would walk all the way around.
Yeah.
Side, yeah. Thank you.
Not a parking-rich school, but there is, there is opportunities around it. Improving the gym flooring, again, that's a, right now, there's very little resiliency or bounce to that floor, so addressing those issues. The, going further up on the left side of the page to the pink purple box right next to the band room, the idea there is, there's currently a small bump out in that area that has some offices in it. The idea here, after speaking with the faculty, is really the priority is on small, smaller performance rehearsal spaces for ensembles. One immediately accessible to the band room and two other ones are shown there as well. So a small bump out that is created here. One of the larger, larger space allocations that you see on this floor is for science. We've tested a number of different approaches to how to deal with right-sizing science. They have some relatively small science labs at Edison. The challenge that we have right now is the desire to maintain the science as a consolidated department within the footprint. So you see there's one small, one science lab that's hanging out side of those, the other four. We're still working on how to best approach to do that. So there's still some additional work that needs to be done on how to best bring together that department at Edison.
For context, how many science labs do we currently have there and like what are the rough sizes of them?
There are five science labs. They're all generally under a thousand square feet at Edison with the standard being closer to 1,200 for the district. And Edison's a little different from the other schools that have, all have six science labs each. So that is a divot of a change. We've discussed whether or not an additional six would be necessary. It isn't necessary on how the school operates as it currently sits. Towards the main entry there, you see the, a small revision to the main entry sequence when, at the right, page right side of the main entrance is shown a consolidated student wellness facility that includes an enlarged nursing office with the proper waiting and treatment facilities as well as some itinerant offices. So the, that is a large priority for Edison is to move those itinerant services up front right towards the main entrance and right by the main office to make sure that they have easy access in and out of the building as necessary and to provide a common home for all of them so that there is a good connection between all the services in the, in the building. The, over to the right side of the page, in the yellow boxes are those exploratory labs, that is currently a large, what used to be a shop-type classroom, used for Project Lead the Way right now. It's easily subdivided into two larger lab spaces that can provide those flexible labs that we had discussed over at Monroe as well. Moving upstairs to the second floor.
Just a general question on lab spaces. Obviously, we're constrained by the envelope of the building, but when this work is done, will the working square foot per student, in terms of space they have to work in, be well-aligned with best practices?
Yeah, the, what we're using right now for science labs is the Hubble model for science, so the approach is to make sure that there's as decently equitable as possible throughout the district, and I think that there's some good flexible strategies that can be employed in the science labs to make sure that they're using as much, using those spaces as hard as they possibly can.
And just a general question, looking at where the science labs are, and being a little more familiar with Monroe than with Edison, so at Edison, the way you will have the science labs set up, there's an intermingling of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, not like a wing?
That's right.
Okay, is that how it is currently?
That's how it is currently, that's how they operate it right now, is as a departmental unit, and they're all basically in the same area, but as you can see, we're shut, instead of, they have all five of their science labs in that general location, so in order to right-size them, we're displacing one right now, so we're trying to figure out how that works.
Thank you.
And it's different at both Franklin and at Monroe, where the science is generally distributed sixth grade versus seventh and eighth at those schools. So, this is more of a departmental model, for sure.
If we were Greenfield, what is the prevailing practice now? Is it the separation by grade levels, or is it the functional model?
I think it really depends on where you, who, what the philosophy of the school is. I think that there's cohort, cohort models that are very valuable, but there's also models of having the department together that work really well, especially for science. You know, the STEM, the STEM model where we have science and math together is really a benefit from how they can work together when we cross levels as well, so I think, you know, either one of those models is valuable.
And what does Hubble have? Do they have the-
Hubble has science labs by floor, right now.
So, by grade level?
Yes.
Okay.
So, this, again, the difference here on the second floor is that the LLC Library Learning Center remains in its same location. We want to make sure that we're updating it, again, with the same standards and practices that we're looking at at the other schools, see if there's some ability for us to bring some additional natural light into that space, since if you picture the Edison photo over there next to the flag, you can see that there's that large piece that sits over the main entryway, that is the LLC. If there's any way that we can open that up, bring some light in there and make that a little bit less intimidating, I think that's a good approach.
I have a question before we move on, on LLC space. It sounds like this was meant to sort of mimic what we have at the other schools. What is the trend of LLC spaces? I was just at a school and they switched to an all-virtual library, which I didn't know if that trend was making it down to middle schools yet.
Well, I think libraries in general, there's a large question of, well, I think we've litigated the question of what the library is in many different ways, and it's continuing to evolve, but you know, it's less about it being a resource, a stable physical resource, than about it being an ability on how to interpret the information that you get and learning from that. So, it's an ability to bring students together to learn how to learn, and learn how to understand the information that they have. I think, you know, bringing students in large groups and small groups, giving opportunities for individuals as well as small groups to work together, providing resources that are beyond books, when we talk about maker spaces, as well as their technology. It's a really, is a resource hub for the school at that point.
The term "maker space" you've used a couple times.
Yeah.
Can you explain what that means?
Sure, a maker space is an area where you can use a variety of different tools that are available to you, from anything from Lego all the way up to woodworking or other craft approaches. So, again, it's a, it's an upskilling approach to things, where it's a hands-on, hands-on center for, you know, your project-based learning. So, you have a project that you're working on in a small group or as a class, you're able to come in here and really explore different ways to communicate your ideas using physical elements. So, I think it's important because it connects a different part of the brain for different students, and, you know, making the ability for us to have the lesson that we're teaching far more sticky in that case.
Is that the same as the innovator studio?
That's, interestingly enough, I think there's good connection there from a pedagogical standpoint, but the, when we look at the innovation or the exploratory labs, in this case, are you referring to the innovations, do you, in this case?
Yeah.
Okay, that, yes, that's correct, in this case.
Okay.
And I don't know that that's going to take the same form as we move through here, because I think there's a desire to have as much openness as possible in the LLC at Edison. Yeah.
One more question about the LLCs, is the, you know, what we saw at Johnson's, is that same in middle school, or is middle school means different, in terms of, you know, the variety of spaces, the ability to reconfigure?
I think you're going to see a lot of similar elements in the design, right, intended to really be a flexible space where students can gather, small groups, large groups, to work on projects when asked, but I think you're going to see a lot of the same elements.
So, one of the positive things we heard about that space was that it's, I hope I'm not going to offend any librarians, but it's less the librarian space now as kind of a shared space for all the teachers to use for their classes. The location here with it being at the outer edge of the building, seems like that could be a hindrance to that. Was there a scenario that relocated it?
Yeah, the original high-concept, we relocated it to the courtyard space, so there's a big X on the bottom side next to the green box there, and created a two-story library learning center, so that it would be more in the public zone of the building and connect both to the academic levels on one and two. I think the idea was that the offset for that wasn't as beneficial as it was seen to having the current position. There are some benefit where it is, it is amongst most of the academic classrooms in the building, so that is beneficial for that, but it does have a good life as it is right now, so. One of the pieces with that is that south of the LLC, there is an opening up of a corridor there that is currently occupied by the LLC, so improving overall building circulation on that level as much as possible as well. In between some of the additional classrooms, you'll see some light-blue boxes, those are current spaces that are used for either officeing or storage. The idea is to open those up to the corridor, provide some space for itinerant drop-in services or for small-group work, project-based learning, really getting out of the current movable partitions that are in those spaces, that have some acoustic challenges to them, and providing some fixed space in there that has some flexibility to it as well. Any additional questions at Edison?
I have a little question. Where's the elevator?
The elevator is right next to the stair in this, if you go by the, where the theater core square is, right to the south of there, there's a communicating stair next to the gray box that says toilet rooms on there, and then there's a small rectangle with an X in it there. That's where the elevator is.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else at Edison? Plan, at Franklin has a band and choral room that have a shared wall, which provides some acoustic challenges and inability to use either one of those spaces while the other one is in use. So, this significantly improves that. There's also, was no space built for, specifically for music, for the third choral or music space in here, orchestra or music space. That is being used in what was originally designated as a storage room for the stage, so being able to provide proper, well-sized, well-acoustically-conditioned spaces for those is very important here. Taking its place at the current choral band space is the relocated library learning center, and that bridges over two floors and is more centrally located on this first floor than on the second-floor location that we'll talk about when we get up there. So, that new, that new building addition is, you know, provides a good courtyard space for that, to allow a natural light within the building into that library learning center, so it's not a buried space. We're also looking at improving the overall circulation and movement in the building. We create, we complete the donut with the new addition, providing some additional opportunities for circulation within the building, and we address that on the second floor as well. Here, you'll see that we have sixth-grade science has been, is right-sized on this floor, with some additional space for student services and itinerant services and health, with student wellness up front by the main entrance and the main office here as well. We have some additional central support services spaces next to the LLC, and we're looking at right-sizing as many of the classrooms as possible and providing opportunities for those small-group testing or itinerant meeting spaces sprinkled throughout there, addressing some of the conditions in the locker rooms, as well as the flooring and bleachers and wall mats and other components in the main gymnasium. We move up to the second floor. So, you see here a little change to the thinking, we had originally had a fully-distributed science model where science was associated with sixth grade on the first floor, seventh grade in the original building wing on the southeast side of campus, and then eighth-grade science on the north side. After discussing with the building, we've consolidated science, seventh and eighth grade on, in this area in the orange here. The size of the classrooms really is beneficial to that, as well as the configuration of the classrooms in this area, and it really kind of made a lot of sense after looking at it. There's a challenging circulation pattern on the second floor right now that we're addressing by straightening it. You see the arrow that shows the intent there, and right next to that is the second floor of the library learning center, which creates a good connection between the academic classrooms on this level, as well as the ones on the first floor. We've addressed the, on the southwest corner of the building is where the former LLC used to be, and we're able to grab four additional classrooms for the building in that area and have those right-sized for that use. Classrooms in general, we're looking at how we can expand the footprint of those as much as possible to make them much more usable than some of the sized, scattered, undersized classrooms as they sit now as well.
What is the room labeled? Team?
Team room is, they're using that as a sort of a departmental touchdown space as necessary, and they have a few of those around the building. Franklin was, is beneficial in having a few of those intentional spaces as they sit right now. A lot of those have been co-opted for additional educational purposes over the year, but being able to bring places for departmental touchdown was a priority there, too. We can go to the lower level at Franklin. Again, sixth-grade classrooms are generally in the lower level of Franklin. There's a large Project Lead the Way space that used to be a career technical education space down here as well, that we're showing, broken up into two large, flexible exploratory labs here, updating the classrooms throughout as we're looking at throughout the rest of the building, and then updating the cafeteria and kitchen here. We know that there are some challenges with the seating quantities within the cafeteria, we'll take every effort to look at how we can improve that situation as well. And that's Franklin. Any questions?
So, in summary, I was trying to think about the plans, the low, medium, high. We have Monroe, most of the components of the medium plan or the bid plan. Edison, mix of components between mid and high, and at Franklin, mostly the high components in the designs as a guiding principle.
Yeah, I'd say that Monroe's a really good mix of medium and high, and then I think that you'll see the same thing. Edison is more towards the mid than the high. It does have that new-building component, which was different than what we'd previously looked at, and I would agree that Franklin is more towards the high-level concept. Thank you.
There was a comment way back when that we needed to have good sightlines for monitoring behavior. Has that been top of mind as you've laid out this? I've noticed here and there, there's a, it's not maybe as clear and straight as it could be, or maybe it's, maybe it is as good as it can be, but would you comment on your attention to that issue?
Sure, and that's something that was definitely brought up both at Monroe and at Franklin, and is, I, it was something that we wanted to make sure that we were addressing, especially at Franklin, because of the challenges on the second floor. The corridors there jog a little bit too much for both student movement, as well as monitoring and safety there. We've done the same at Monroe by straightening out one of the circulation bumps around the gymnasium, providing direct access into there and moving north-south from there. So, as much as we can, we'd like to continue to do that, yeah.
At the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned that the next phase is that there's going to be some additional feedback from the buildings. Can you just describe that process and what that looks like?
Sure, so we anticipate as we continue through the process, there's a multitude of different, and that's actually a good way to go on, a couple slides up from here as well, that I can just start talking on. There, perfect. So, we're at the, we're in the very beginning stages of design, where we're at in the pre-design programming schematic design sort of mix of phases as we are. This is a great time for us to get additional user feedback, as we're getting, we're defining more and more the issues at hand, as well as the details, and we continue through the design continuum, we're going to keep on coming back to the users to make sure that anything that's done matches the expectations there, or if there's new information that comes to plate that we, that we're highlighting that. So, that's going to be a continuous process as we go through the design, and making sure that we're addressing those questions, we're really meeting with the users on a regular basis to make sure that the, the plans that are developed reflect the future of each one of these institutions, not just a static image of where they should be today.
And you're working with the principals at the buildings?
Yes.
And I presume you're working with the staff here as well?
Yes, absolutely, yep.
For consistency?
Yep. For, yeah, for organization, as well as logistics, and making sure that decision-making has a centralized location with that as well.
Maybe, Mr., give me a U R here.
Sure, we're, I would say we're right at the, right at the change between orange and yellow, right there.
Okay.
So, you know, we've done quite a bit of pre-design already, we're getting into adding the more and more detail as we keep on moving through here. There's still some additional program elements that we'll continue to develop through the process, but we want to get really into developing as much information as we can so that we have a good picture of where we're going. Okay? Any questions on this? I kind of read through here a little bit, but there's, this really gives an idea of the, of the major phases in design and construction. The design side going from orange to green, then we get into the actual bidding and negotiation portion of it and into construction, not, you know, these aren't by any stretch of the imagination, you know, sized by effort or by length of term, just giving an idea of what happens during each one of these phases. The idea is that we get more and more information, and we have distinct points at which we come back and make sure that we've met that, met the goals there as we move forward, so. Okay? So, we were asked to take a look at some scenario planning around overall project- So we were asked to take a look at some scenario planning around overall project delivery schedule. We have a few different approaches that can be used depending on both risk tolerance as well as initial investment and other pros and cons with those. We can run through that here. So you see option one is what is labeled as a baseline project schedule. This approach takes the projects through as much initial schematic design as possible in order to get more clarity on the overall project budget for a June-July timeline. Then has a wait on design until after November in order to start into the major first phase of major design. That would, the intent would be any of the building additions, as those are the longest and the most impactful components, as well as they provide some additional staging space or, or flex space for programs to move in while other spaces being renovated. So the anticipation in this case would be a design that would, that would continue through twenty, the majority of 2025 with construction starting in 2026 and being done for the beginning of the 2027, 2028 school year. There, each one of these projects is always going to, each, each one of these scenarios is going to show a multi-phased project. We want to make sure that we're, we're our, keep a constant eye on the overall project budget as we move in each one of these phases of design. So we don't make it to the last phase without any, without sufficient enough fund to do that. That's why we establish upfront what these phases are going to be, what the original, what the project budget should be for these. And we have some, some good ability to balance that as we move through the project. So each one of those subsequent project phases has its own design period as well as its own bid release period, having construction in summers of 2027 and 2028. You see a dashed blue line there. There is a potential for working in isolated areas of the building during that school year if that's possible. We'll go through as we work through logistics to see if that is actually possible to isolate specific areas as much as we can. We don't, we don't know if that's possible now. It may be, it may be something that we need to review. So at the bottom of each, each one of these pages, you'll see what is the, what would be the initial investment for the district. That is the schematic design as well as some budget estimating in this case, and then some pros and cons. So one, some, one of the challenges with this is that it, because it pushes the timeframe of the overall project out a little further, you deal with some additional escalation on the costs as inflation and labor rates increase over time. So that, that impacts the project on the backend here. And the, and the benefit is that it does have, minimizes your initial investment as a district as well.
When we say enabling projects, how should I interpret that? Is a lot of that work that would be regular work under our Sherman Dirges anyway, or?
Yes, I would say that, that if we go to the next page, that's the, that would be the enabling projects approach. This, that would be the, there's two ways you can do that. By biting off a smaller piece of the apple right up front so that you have, you're getting into construction work in 2025. That can be either exactly as you said, where, where you're doing components, pieces that you would be doing anyway. You know, so that, that, the idea is there, you go through, you go into the design of that. You're not out anything because this is work you're going to do anyway. So then you implement that work. Or you can have some additional components attached to larger capital projects with that. It could include site improvements, utility relocation, and other things to make it so that the next phases of work can, can, can continue that way. And that's, that's this approach. It's kind of a, it's a light front, heavy middle and heavier end approach where we have that, that first initial enabling projects that really continue through, through design after the completion of schematic design in the June-July timeframe. We have the first summer of work in 2025. Roll right into design work for the major projects for 2026, 20, and open up then in the 2027, 2028 school year, and then complete the work in the summers of 2027 and 2028.
So as you, you mentioned, as things get a little bit longer, say to 2028, and you referenced inflation as being cause of costs, potential cost increase.
Right.
My project management perspective would say, I'm going an extra year, I'm going to pay more anyway. Like, is that, is there a component of it that's just pure time-based?
There is.
In addition to just inflation?
There is. Yes. And, and I think the, I think we always look at escalation and, and labor rate increase as, as being a primary driver on that side. But just the extended, extended construction period does tend to increase costs as well.
Got it. Thanks.
Yeah. As well as complexity of phasing too. That's why we want to keep those to three phases as much as possible. You know, the, the, the challenge with a multi-phased project is the, is to minimize the impact on the student on the, on the long run by, you know, addressing how that, how the school changes over time to make sure that, you know, as with every other project, we want to make sure every, every one of the phase ends that we still have a, a school that's going to do everything that the school wants to be able to do in it. And we're not leaving it without facilities that it would otherwise need.
Can we just clarify? So in the phase one enabling projects design section in 2024, that, that design encompasses projects that we have to do?
It can, it can also include some, some site work or other, or utility work or other, other specific items that would, that would make it easier to implement the next phase of work, essentially.
Okay. Because suppose we don't have the community support to go further?
Yeah.
Are we out some, financially out some funds?
I think that's, that's a good point because, because I think the, the hope is, the way this is structured is that, the hope is that there's no loss of, of, of investment from the district if you're able to do that, those projects that address any of the deferred maintenance or other components there.
And so in that timeframe in 2024, the year we're in the design, like as a board, like where are those funds coming from to pay for that part of the project?
We would have to bring, take that out of our capital projects. So likely that's fund balance as you fund any other summer project.
But in our budget, haven't we already allocated?
We, we have, but that does not mean you could not, you, you couldn't use, you could use additional fund balance if you wish to draw from some of your existing fund balances you've done in the past. So just think back to the last couple of years. Well, you have an allocation you target through Sherman Dirges. We've spent more than that if we've chosen to take on more projects. So the, the board does have some accumulated fund balance that you could choose to draw from to frontload some of these projects.
Okay. Thanks.
Go on to the third scenario. This shows a, a moderate approach to, to the complexity of potential projects. This has a more of an aggressive, a, a start to the design phases. So we, we, in this approach, design begins for the major building additions right immediately after the June-July timeline. Making, making it so that in the first quarter, end of first quarter 2025, that is when projects will start going out for the major building additions with those starting in the summer of 2025 and completing in mid-year 2026, 2027. Not ideal to have a mid-year delivery, but just based on where the, the design and, design starts proper, we want to make sure that we're doing the right, the right thing for those projects as well. And then there's two additional subsequent years of summer projects in 2027, 2028 that would, that would clean that whole project up. So there's a greater investment in the design side, and it is more specifically focused on the major capital improvements at each one of the schools up front here. It minimizes your project escalation because you do, you're doing the, the major piece of construction up front as soon as you can. You have a, a good view on starting work in 2025. So there is a, a sort of an immediate feedback on that as well.
Given that we're talking about three different buildings here, is it feasible to do the same schedule for all three, both our facilities team bandwidth-wise and the labor market?
Yes. Yeah, we believe so. The, the scale of the projects is not, not excessive for that. And I don't think there's a challenge from that. We'd ask our construction manager partners as well to, to put some, put some finer point on that. But, but everything that we've, we've seen suggests that it's possible. Also, the, the bidding for the, the building additions doesn't necessarily have to follow a traditional summer project bidding because it is a multi-year phase so that there's a lot more interest in those projects that, that will have a longer window from the labor market. So it's well-positioned in that, that case. Look at one more option. This is, this is the, the most aggressive of the schedule options. It takes a little bit of explaining to do. The dots aren't really, really helpful for you here. But this approach takes a, a sort of a multi-delivery approach to the first phase of work in that you would go out, if you look at the first phase of work towards the end of 2024, there would be a delivery of a site and infrastructure package for the new building additions. That would be steel, concrete, anything that's for the, that can be immediately released that can, that can start ahead of the interior work or the utility work throughout the buildings. Then a secondary package would follow up for the rest of that build-out. The benefit from that is you're able to start those shell core, shell core and site work almost immediately in the, in the first or second quarter of 2025, and then continue that work on through 2026. Challenges that come with that are the upfront coordination between those components, making sure that we're all on the same page with the budget. It really compresses the design schedule quite a bit from that, that standpoint. It does have a lower, is, implicate, no, a lower impact on overall escalation as well. And it does provide some challenges with, with packaging together as much work as you can at one time with the number of the packages that there would be. So you have a number, this, this lowers the overall project scope. You saw a number of these ended in 2028. And the approach to this is to, is to reduce that down to even one more year to 2027.
So you said project scope, you meant timeline?
Yes.
Sorry. And then can you just explain what reduced buying effectiveness means?
Yeah. If you're buying, if you're, if you have multiple packages, then multiple bidders can bid on it once you have more effective buying power from that and you're able to, to do a little bit more efficiency in your bidding process that way. So it lowers that a little bit. But since you have allied projects that are, that are working with, you know, steel is going to be over multiple places, concrete's going to be over multiple places, you know, there is still some efficiency to that.
So just a question. What, so on options two, three, and four, like what kind of budget are we talking for the design planning? What could we, what are we potentially risking?
We can identify what that would be if there's, if there's a desire to understand that a little further. I don't know that we've gone through that so far. We're still in the, as, as we have multiple different approaches to that, we need to spend some, a little more time on that.
And in addition to identifying the cost of that design phase, if you could, it sounds like for the basic improvements of deferred maintenance, we would have some of that anyway if you could also let us know the incremental cost.
Sure.
And I think a third related question touching on what Rob asked about earlier is what do we estimate the inflation avoidance as, as we move to the more aggressive, aggressive options that potentially offsets some of that early design risk?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, general, just, just as a point of information, the general approach to estimating projects is to, is to escalate costs to the mid-phase of construction. So if you can understand a, a 2027 end has a, a mid-phase in 2026 versus 2028 has a further out. So that just increases the overall escalation approach to things too. So, and it's balanced out by the, the total quantity of work that's going to be done at any given year. So I think there's a lot of work to be done around what the phasing strategy looks like and what the, the annual expenditure looks like as well that will have a direct impact on that too.
I'll just speak for myself. Not, not knowing what construction in a school looks like during a year, could we have a separate topic at some point to talk about what the experiences for kids in the building while this is going on? Safety, disruption, you know, just all the stuff, right?
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
And related to that, in particular, I'm a little bit concerned given our parking and drop-off situations, which I know in many of our buildings are already challenges. How is that managed when you've got construction equipment and such onsite?
Right. Very good points. We are in constrained sites at all three schools. So it will be a logistical challenge, not something that, that the group hasn't done before, but you know, something that I, I, I'm sure you, you all deserve an answer on how that would look.
We can leverage the facilities committee as well. I mean, sure.
And Dr. Schuler, in the case of Monroe, what is our current status with the county relative to using their land? If that helps with logistics during construction?
Yeah. So we, we have an agreement that allows us to utilize their space. I think if we were talking about something very specific to a construction project, we would want to revisit that very specific to the, the project. But there's candidly probably more open accessibility at Monroe because of the fairgrounds property immediately adjacent than there is the other two.
I have a couple mechanical questions on the funding. If we do some work up front of the, the question on the ballot and then, and, and we're successful, the ballot referendum passes, can those dollars be paid for out of those proceeds from borrowing?
Yes, they can. As lo, as long as there are attributable costs to the design that are covered through, whatever the question is, even if you have paid them upfront, they could be reimbursed.
And then secondly, I mean, we would be, it would be kind of like a line of credit. We'll be borrowing the money as we spend it, right? If it passes and we're borrowing significantly money, at what point do we start paying back? So in other words, if the, if the referendum happens in November and it passes, we start spending money in the spring, when would our first payment be?
Haven't worked through that yet. As, as well as the group knows, we do not have any debt service tied to the 2025 tax levy. So we very well to make sure that we don't go into a major dip and then come back up, focus on that area. Certainly part of it depends on when those, if we are going to be issuing some debt, when that's being issued and the timing associated with tying it either to the 25 or 26 tax levy we'd have to work through.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Yeah, it'd be, it'd be great if the finance committee could kind of hand all that, then make a recommendation, right? Yeah, yeah. That'd be great. I hadn't thought about it more. No, I get it. Yeah, yeah, I get it. Great. Quick. Any other questions, Board? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Second topic is the Vision 2026 Academic Excellence Strategies. Dr. Schuler?
Mrs. Murphy, do that.
Okay. Good evening. It's a pleasure to have an opportunity to provide an update to the board and community on the work that Ed Services Department has been doing connected to our Academic Excellence Strategies. As a reminder for the board, we have six strategies for academic excellence. We are focusing in on two this evening. There's a few pieces of documents in your folder that I want to point you to. First, there's a packet that looks like this. This is a comprehensive explanation of all of the components of the work plan and exactly what has been done to date. And then for the purposes of providing some more detailed information, I did select seven areas I wanted to highlight this evening, and I put together a slide deck. So that's what I'm going to be using tonight, is walk through the slide deck on seven different areas. So before I do start, I do want to just acknowledge the directors that work in my department. I'm really thankful that we've been able to expand those positions because they certainly play a really key role in supporting all of this work and leading this work. So I'm going to start with the Academic Excellence Strategy that is called Expanding Programming to Prepare Students Academic Excellence Strategy that is called Expanding Programming to Prepare Students for a Full Range of Post-Secondary Opportunities. The board's work plan this year has seven different areas that we identified as focuses for the year. You can see all seven right here. Um, I am going to spend time talking about these four. So I'm going to dive in and start with the Transitional English Course. As a reminder for the board, um, we have on our dashboard defined high school proficiency. And this is tied to the Illinois State Board of Education's definition of what a college and career readiness student means. And so in terms of English proficiency, there are a set of courses you can take and earn a C or better, or an exam score to be defined as proficient in English. And we talked in the fall, when I presented about the data, that we were expanding those options. And this is one of those areas that we've worked to expand. So Transitional English is the course. If our students take that course, they could, and they earn a C or better, they can enter directly into credit-bearing coursework at a local community college or a, another post-secondary opportunity. So I do want to highlight the work that has been done with this because it's been significant. And our two high school chairs, um, at the, at South and at North have played a critical role in the work of this course. And so this started all the way back in 2022, January 2022. They have worked closely with COD. They have hosted a luncheon for other area schools to learn more about the course. They've developed the course. We have had to work with COD in submitting paperwork to get that approval so that our students can enter directly in without having to take credit remedial course. Um, and now it's going to the State Board of Education for their approval, which means once it approves, it's approved by the State Board of Education, then that can transfer to other universities within Illinois. Um, I think that what's really exciting is next year, Wheaton, Warrenville South, Wheaton North will be one of three schools in DuPage County offering Transitional English. Um, the other is Lake Park. So really our teams are to be commended for their leadership in bringing this to the board and COD and ISB as well.
You mentioned can be transferable to other state institutions. Is that a can or will?
As soon as ISB approves it, it, it will be.
Okay.
Yes. I say can because it has officially been approved by ISB. Right now it's been approved by COD, which means COD would accept it. So the next step is ISB.
And when it's approved by ISB, it would be, um, schools within Illinois?
Correct.
Okay.
So the second course I want to speak to, it also falls under that umbrella of the courses students can take to be considered college and career-ready. And this is the College Composition Course. This is our first year of offering this course. This is our first transferable gen ed course, meaning it's one of those courses if there's, if our students take with us, it can be transferred to the other Illinois universities. And so we have 174 students that are enrolled in that course between our two campuses. And I actually had an opportunity to connect with the staff that are teaching that course. And I just included a quote right here from one of the North teachers. I'll just give you a moment to read what she had to say about the course. So, um, what I, I do have to say is what I have heard from our staff is that it really has done an outstanding job of preparing our students for the skills that they, they will need in their post-secondary education with that focus on writing. So the third area I want to spend time talking about is our career pathways work. And so when we talk about career pathways, it's so multifaceted. There are so many layers that go into career pathways. And I've done my best to summarize them all here in this table. And so the ultimate goal is that we offer programming that allows our students to receive an endorsement on their transcript, which would be certified by ISB. And so for us to be able to offer that, there are lots of things that we have to have in place and they're all in the dark blue columns. So our students have to have career exploration activities. They have to have a sequence of courses that allows them to learn more about that pathway. And that sequence of courses includes an orientation course. It includes skill development and includes a capstone active, um, opportunity. I also want to highlight, you'll see, there's another opportunity we laid out there where it says clear, career exploration and discovery with a little asterisk. That is not a requirement of ISB, but because we are a unit district, we are in a unique position to be able to have continuity of programming. And we believe that the middle school should serve as that opportunity to bring about career exploration, interest in developing talents. So we include that. Um, it also, to get that endorsement, you also have to have early college coursework that is aligned to the career pathways. And so, um, students would have to take six hours of dual credit or, um, early college coursework, which could also be AP. They have to have work-based learning experiences. That has to be 60 hours. And then the last two columns, the light blue, are not requirements by ISB, but we feel locally they are important to a robust career pathway experience. And that's industry credentials. When those are available for us to offer, we want to include that as part of our programming. And then on the, um, the last column is co-curriculars. We want to give students experiences outside of the classroom to, um, learn more about these, uh, career opportunities. So, oh, I, I want to mention one more thing, the red, um, column where that's the endorsement opportunity on the transcripts. As a reminder to the board, we actually were, we have one area that has been certified by ISB right now. And we had our first group of students that, um, did get that endorsement on their transcript. We had 19 of them this year. So we anticipate, um, having more next year, which I can show you how that will come to be. So business is a pathway that we will have in place next year. And so for ISB, this is the Finance and Business Service Pathway. And you can see the sequence of courses laid out there. Again, we've included the middle school opportunity that aligns in the electives, um, option there. Um, the early college coursework is incubator. Um, Ian Smith has really developed a phenomenal relationship with COD and working with them in, um, taking either courses we currently offer or exploring other courses that we could add into our pathway. So Business Incubator this year is a dual credit course. The students in that, um, course this year will earn dual credit. Social media marketing is not a course we currently have. Um, that is a course that we are going to bring to the board in the fall to seek approval for. That will also be a dual credit opportunity. Sports Marketing is a course that we offer right now, but we're working with, um, we've worked with COD and where there's a few little tweaks we need to make to the current course to be able to offer it as dual credit starting next year. Um, the great thing about this pathway is that Business Incubator experience allows the work-based learning to count. And so those 60 hours students need to have, it do occur within Business Incubator. Industry credentials is something that we're still looking into.
So is, is, I'm just saying, thinking Business Incubator, is that a one experience, checks three boxes or is it three separate experiences?
Um, big, Business Incubator, uh, if I think I'm going to answer your question.
Yeah.
Um, it's part of the sequence of courses.
Right.
It counts as a dual, one dual credit opportunity and it has the work-based learning embedded within it.
Yeah. Check two boxes. One.
Yeah.
Yep. Got it. Thank you. And then we're, sorry. We, um, the course selection, the topics, where does that come from? What's the genesis of that? So sports marketing.
Mm-hmm.
What was the genesis of, I'm just picking one, but pick any of them.
Yeah. Great question. Okay. So, um, Sports Marketing was actually a course we already offered. And so, um, we have, we started our career pathways work by looking at our current course off, offerings and aligning them. So this was a course that we looked at, but we wanted to explore possibilities for dual credit. And so working with COD, we were able to figure out they actually have a similar course and there's just some little tweaks we need to make to make it a dual credit opportunity.
Thank you.
I have a question. The middle school, um, offering that we're adding isn't, if you sort of don't get that in middle school and decide you want to do a pathway later on, do you still get the recognition or have you just missed your opportunity?
Oh, yeah. The, the middle school opportunity does not apply to the ISB requirement. Thank you for asking that. We're just factoring it in because we think it makes a more robust experience for our students that travel with us the whole time. Okay. The second pathway that we will be adding next year is the Communications Pathway. Um, and so for ISB, this would be the Arts and Communications, um, you know, endorsement. And so here you can see the sequence of courses that we would offer. Broadcast Media 1 and Broadcast Media 2 are courses that we currently have in our course catalog. They are popular at North. They had not been running at Wheaton, Warrenville South, but we have worked this year to identify a teacher for that course. That teacher is, um, going through the necessary coursework. We already anticipate having a section of that at Wheaton, Warrenville South next year and, um, on both sides of town, that will be offered as dual credit opportunities. So we're excited about that. The work we need to do though, is in work-based learning. So, um, this is actually going to be a new adventure for us. Um, all of our work-based learning has been within the confines of our buildings where we have our, you know, teachers going into our other schools and Business Incubator is within our building too. This is going to be work for us that we are currently, um, addressing. We need to get business partners and we need to develop those outside partnerships to allow our students to be able to have those work-based learning experiences. So this is going to be exciting, but is certainly another part of the process that is, and new for us. Here's another exciting opportunity. This is a nursing pathway. This, I, I'm excited about this because we're blending what we currently offer at our two high schools with our opportunity at TCD. And so TCD, great partner for us. Um, and we're able, we were able to build a pathway, um, a health science pathway out of those two experiences. So you can see all of those different courses that we offer within our buildings. And the TCD nursing program, um, i, is outstanding. And students who, um, take that have the opportunity to get up to 13 hours of dual credit. And it has the clinical hours built within the TCD programming too. And so, um, really exciting. It, it also has credentials already aligned there as well. So, um, again, we're going to apply to ISB next year for this pathway too. And I, um, anticipate students attending TCD would get that endorsement. So.
Am I reading that correctly? That that's essentially post-graduation though with TCD? The 30, is that what the 13 reflects?
Yes. If, once they've completed all of the courses at TCD. So with, while they attend TCD, they have the opportunity to get, earn up to 13 hours of dual credit.
Okay.
So there's, there's four courses.
So logistically, how does that work in terms of students who are taking that coursework at TCD as well as coursework at the, the high school?
Yeah. Those are things that are worked out with their, their school counselor and their four-year planning. Yeah. So they attend a portion of their day, they go to TCD and then they return, um, to our building for the other part of the day.
So is the plan for this one, 25 and 26, whether it starts being offered?
Nursing?
Yeah.
No. Yeah. Next, next school year.
24. This coming school.
Correct. 24, 25. Correct. Yep. So that's a good question. I'm just going to go back here. We're going to submit the paperwork for, to ISB for business, communications, um, as long as we get the work-based learning in place. And nursing next school year. So the students who are enrolled in those dual credit courses, as long as they've taken the other sequence of courses could get that endorsement. And students moving forward. Okay. Marketing is another pathway that we've done a lot of work in developing. Um, we're not fully finished with it, but we have a lot, um, done that I thought it was worthwhile of sharing it with the board. So you can see the sequence of courses, um, there. This is where the social media marketing course that we're going to bring to the board certainly will play a big role. And, um, again, we're, but work to be done still with the work-based learning here. But we're excited about the, what we have done so far.
So a number of general questions about the, the career pathways. Um, since it feels like in some cases we're dependent upon specific single teachers who have met the requirements, what is our risk management or continuity planning in the event one of those teachers were to leave the district? Are we able to recover from that over a, a summer?
I think those are questions and topics that we are still talking about as an administrative team. Yes. We are, we have identified teachers that, to teach these courses and we certainly need to do the work of identifying others that could be possibilities.
And then this layout is great. Can we get this for the existing pathways like education, kind of laid out like this? And then just a comment, um, I had the opportunity to interact with a, a lot of students over the past week and kind of poked around a little bit to understand awareness. And I would say in general, I'm surprised that a lot of students aren't aware of the career pathways work that we've done. So I think some internal marketing, whether it's through registration process, counseling, et cetera, to build awareness is something we should consider as we add these great offerings.
Um, yeah. Thank you for that. I, I can speak to, this is actually a topic that we just explored with our administrative team. Mr. Biskin leads monthly meetings for our high school principals. And this was a topic that the group identified as work that we need to do, especially because we're bringing on more pathways. We felt like it was really critical that we, um, had a communication package for parents and students, especially in front of course selection for next year.
I noticed that the marketing and business are very, very similar.
Similar.
Right? Marketing doesn't include incubator. The only thing I see on marketing that's not on business is desktop publishing. Is that right?
Yeah. The other thing I would say is, um, I'm just going to go back there to the business one. The business one is two, two, we included social media marketing, sports marketing and incubator. That's, um, that would be pretty aggressive for a student. They may not choose all of those courses. They may just, we would want them to do incubator because that's the work-based learning, but they might select between the two marketing courses. Um, okay. So connected obviously to this is the middle school electives. And, um, included in your folder, there's actually a document that was originally put together when the board had last looked at middle school electives. Um, I did include it because it's the best document I have found that provides a description of what the offerings of the elective choices are at the middle school. And so the last time they were updated was 2012. We have collectively said that we feel like the goal of middle school electives is to align the courses to our, our priority pathways at the high school. And we want to allow that experience for the career exploration. We want students to have the opportunity to explore, interest and develop talents. That's really what's guiding us is we are thinking about electives. And so, um, we are as an administrative team right now. And so, um, we are, as an administrative team right now, we've had a lot of conversations. We dedicate time monthly at our middle school meetings to talk about our current electives and possibilities. Um, we have also spent time talking to all of our staff that teach these courses to seek their input. We have, um, spent a lot of time reviewing all of our current options. We've talked a lot about talking, um, our courses and what aligns to a pathway, what doesn't align to a pathway. What students have high interest in, what's, are less popular with our students. Um, and we have some options that as an administrative team, we're currently looking at. Our goal is really to finalize, um, those options to bring to a group of teachers, um, this school year. So, um, so that's work that's been taking place. And we'll certainly have more of an update on that for the board when we have more input from our administrators and staff. All right, so, I'm going to move into the second strategy, and that's learning acceleration. The work plan has five areas, and I am going to spend time talking to you about three of those this evening. So, as a reminder for the board, we do have our curriculum implementation framework. Um, I've introduced this a couple of times. I think it's beneficial for board and community to know that we have a pretty robust process for developing curriculum within the district. And so, it always starts with research. It moves to piloting and selecting materials. Then, it moves to preparing to launch those materials. And then, it ends with teach and learn, which is an ongoing cycle that, um, really doesn't have an ending. But, um, research is the spot that sometimes takes the longest. Um, we can, um, spend, you know, almost a year in that phase. Right now, we have a lot of middle school work that's in phase one. So, um, ELA, which is English Language Arts, Social Studies, and the electives work really is right there. I'm going to skip all the way over to phase four. We have a lot in phase four. K-eight math is in phase four. So, uh, as a reminder, all of our buildings are utilizing illustrative math or IM. And so, um, we're continuing to support, um, that implementation. K-five, the reading component of Bookworms is being implemented by all of our teachers. And then, in K-two, they were, they're doing the full component of Bookworms this year, which includes that DI block and the writing. And then, we're actually gearing up for all of our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers next year to be doing the writing part. So, um, when we look at middle-
One quick question on that. And if you're going to answer this later, you can feel free to tell me. Um, I was curious because it was such a heavy lift for the new IM curriculum and the Bookworms, what feedback, um, we were receiving on those?
Yeah, that, that's a great question. I actually have a slide where I'm going to talk about feedback. So, I will expand upon that. Okay, so, um, middle school ELA. We, last year, we got through those first two boxes with our steering committee. And this year, we've met four times, and we have completed those last two parts. So, our steering committee, which has representatives from all of the schools, um, has selected two materials they, they would like to pilot next year. Savas is my, my perspective, and McGraw-Hill studies think are the two instructional materials they have selected. And we're putting plans in place for what that pilot will look like. So, um, moving now into Bookworms implementation. So, um, when we look at phase four, there's lots of components. I want to start first with that idea right there in bold where it's monitor the data. So, we're a data-driven school district. We use the information to drive, um, continuous improvement. And so, the great thing about FastBridge is we give that three times a year. So, we have that touch point, um, collectively to look at the data and have conversations with our teachers and administrators. And so, from the winter FastBridge data, we did identify two areas that, um, we need to focus on. That's kindergarten foundational skills and fluency. And so, in a couple of slides, I'm going to tell you how we're doing that. When, um, we are in this phase, we are also seeking feedback. So, um, here are the ways we have, we have collected that feedback. All staff had the opportunity to participate in virtual feedback sessions. So, I had four after-school times. All sta-, elementary staff had the ability to jump onto the Google meets and provide us with feedback. Um, we also conducted a professional learning survey as well to gather more information on the topics that our staff were interested in learning about. Um, we've also had specific feedback loops for certain specialists. Um, multilingual learner, or multilingual specialist was a group that we felt like we needed to have a feedback loop for. Um, reason being, as you may remember at the last committee of the whole meeting, I brought to you the number of, increased number of newcomers. And so, um, that certainly has posed some, um, you know, issues that we've had to work through with our multilingual specialist. And so, they have been a group that we felt really were important for us to have that consistent feedback loop with. We actually meet with that group monthly, a small group, um, monthly to hear from them. And then, half-day kindergarten teachers. We, um, actually have a lot of new half-day kindergarten teachers this year. And, um, we felt like it was really important to support them. So, Dr. Moran has been meeting with them monthly as well. So, in terms of feedback, um, I, we have heard the things that are working really well with ELA, with Bookworms. We have heard the things that people need more support with. And actually, the next slide I go into is going to, um, address the things that they needed more support with. I actually have to say honestly, I think our staff is doing an exceptional job of implementing IM. And then, on the heels of that, another set of instructional materials. I, my team and I go out to our, our schools regularly to visit classrooms. I was at Bauer two days ago, yesterday, actually. I was at Bauer yesterday. Had an opportunity to visit all the kindergarten, all the first grade, second grade, third grade. Um, routines are in place. Um, students are working independently. They're working on their assignments. Their writing is phenomenal. Um, staff look comfortable with the materials. So, I think at the beginning, it's a big lift. And it's, there are still a lot of things that we are learning about Bookworms and working on. And that's going to take time. But, I, I really do think our staff is doing an exceptional job. And they are doing a great job of telling us what they need more help with as well.
Has there been any feedback about the, the block sizes in terms of amount of time allocated to English Language Arts versus the, the math?
Well, we always had more time for English Language Arts. Um, that was always much longer than math. But, I, the honest feedback is they need those three forty-five minute periods. But, it also does mean a majority of the school day is spent on English Language Arts and math. And it, it does make for tight scheduling. That our principals have, um, had to do a lot of extra work to put all of the pieces together. Um, so, in, with regards to supporting our teachers, our plan for supporting teachers always involves three different components. It always involves training, planning, and coaching. And so, um, our coaches, we're fortunate, we have one coach at every one of our thirteen buildings. And they meet with, um, Dr. Moran and me weekly. And that's really important because it helps make sure that the implementation, um, and the consistency of implementation is there. The coaches have also participated in professional learning with the University of Delaware, who, um, developed the program throughout the year. And they're supporting all of our K-two classrooms with DI, um, this year. But, the training is where we're really addressing the feedback we have heard. So, um, every institute day has had time dedicated to supporting our staff with Bookworms. So, you can see all the topics up here. When you look at the January topic, that was directly planned from the feedback we got from those virtual sessions. We had teachers that said, "I don't really understand the progression of the writing and what it looks like over the course of the year. I don't understand what they were supposed to do before they came to me. I don't understand what they do after in the next grade level." So, we spent time, um, addressing that for our staff in January, and we got great feedback on that. And then, when you look at the list for March, that is also based on feedback, but it's also based on what we saw were the needs of our staff based on data. And so, we know that we need to spend some extra time with our kindergarten staff on the foundational skills instruction. Our data showed that. So, we have a session dedicated just to that on Friday. We also saw that our fluency data, um, we think that that could, um, could have been better. And so, that's an area that we know we need to support our staff with. So, again, on Friday, we have a session dedicated to that. The biggest topic we continue to hear are the supports for multilingual learners. Our staff, um, are craving to know how they can better support multilingual learners, not just from a specialist, but when they're in the classroom without a specialist. And this is why that is a session on Friday as well. And then, um, the ELA read aloud, that came from the professional learning survey. Our staff said that, that, that we needed to dedicate time to that. Um, plan, we use the same model we did with IM where our teachers were given the opportunity to have a sub to collaboratively plan with a coach. And so, we've, um, we've done that this year, and our title buildings have actually been able to access some of the title dollars to have additional days for that collaborative planning. Okay, um, illustrative math. So, this year, um, with illustrative math, our goal has been to really focus on two areas, a portrait of a graduate. And those are communication and collaboration. And the reason why we wanted to focus on those two areas are not just because they're, um, important and part of the portrait of a graduate, but also, there's research that says they're really critically important for student learning. John Hattie's visible learning meta-analysis, I know that's something you, the board is familiar with. We've talked about, um, John Hattie's work before. He's identified those at classroom discussions and collaborative learning as having an impact on student learning. So, classroom discussions, um, certainly has a high impact. And collaborative learning is, um, has a point four or five where his research says a point four is the hinge point to have a year's worth of growth or lo-, or more. So, both of those, um, we know will make a difference to student learning. Our staff are using two research-based strategies to increase communication and collaboration. And those are called the math language routines. And this strategy is from a book called Building Thinking Classrooms. So, um, we are getting started with this work across our buildings. And so, we have teachers that, um, have really dove into these and are doing a really phenomenal job. So, the math language routines is one of those. Those are eight strategies that are designed to support math language growth. If you talk to any of our teachers about IM, I think the first thing they would tell you is it's language-heavy. And the language of math is not one that they're using at recess, right? So, we have to help them develop that language. And so, the math language routines are really important to all students, but they were first developed for English language learners. And the great thing about illustrative math is they're built into the lesson plan. Last year, we had training for some of our elementary staff. And, um, this year, we had an after-school training. It was four sessions long, and we had twenty-five staff members that participated in that. We had phenomenal feedback about that training session. We're going to look to offer that again. The great thing about this, this training opportunity, our own teachers brought it to us. Our teachers at Franklin identified it, brought it to us, asked us if this was a possibility. We said we'd love to do it, and, um, were able to offer it and get twenty-five teachers to commit to it. So, um, hopefully, this is the fun part of the agenda for you. So, um, this is seventh grade. So, you're going to experience a math language routine here for a moment. So, this is, um, a picture of, that comes straight from seventh grade, um, at Franklin where they were implementing those math language routines. So, um, the lesson started with asking our students to write their own mathematical, um, questions about the situation. So, um, the math language routine that they, that this is called is co-crafting questions. So, even if you think for yourself, maybe what are some of the questions you might even ask about those four thermometers there? Lots of good questions came from our students. And so, you can even see a picture of them right there, writing up those questions. Um, when you ta-, when you talk to our math coach, um, from Franklin, she, she just raved about how the participation of the multilingual learners, how impressed she was because they were able to engage in the conversation, um, from just this simple exercise. And I'll show you why this is important. Because this is actually the activity that the students need to do. So, um, there's a series of math questions right there. So, instead of just jumping right into that series of math questions, they're doing, they're, they're doing this activity where they're warming up their brains. So, I actually like the language that comes right from this. It allows students to get inside the context of the activity before they have to just start producing the answers, right? Like, they have to just start quickly answering those questions. They kind of like warm their minds up to it. They get the language, they can talk to other students. It, it is proven to really add a lot of, um, access for our students with those language needs. So, in terms of the MLRs, this is what, um, the research says that it does for our students. So, we're really excited about this, um, taking shape in our buildings. The other area of communication I want to focus in on is from this book called Building Thinking Classrooms. This is quite popular in the educational world right now, and is becoming extremely popular in District 200. Um, we have, every level, our teachers are reading this book. So, we've got book studies going on at our elementary buildings, our middle school buildings, and our high school buildings are reading this book, Building Thinking Classroom. And what, um, is really exciting about it, it is it gives these fourteen practices that are based on research to increase student thinking. The individual who wrote the book said his goal was to build classrooms where there are thinkers. He did not like being in math classrooms where students are just answering questions. He wanted them to be doing a lot of deep thinking. And so, there's fourteen strategies, but our teachers are really focusing in on the first three. Um, I listed, I listed right there. The first one's, um, a slam dunk for us because you have to give them rich tasks to do. It can't just, just be naked computation, right? It has to have some, like, deep mathematical thinking to it. And so, I am slam dunk for that. And then, these other two are really interesting. So, the one is called forming ran-, um, visibly random groups. So, what this is, is like literally students, um, the research shows that students do better if, um, the teacher literally partners them and it's completely random. Students feel much more comfortable when they know it's not predetermined, um, and, you know, for specific reasons. And, um, the research also shows if they use these vertical non-permanent surfaces, which is basically a whiteboard, um, they, and they're standing up, they talk about math a lot more, they feel a lot more comfortable about solving problems. And the, the non-permanent part is really, really important because they feel comfortable, um, starting something and erasing. So, here are some pictures. So, on the left, that's Whittier, on the right, that's Edison. You see, these are, Building Thinking Classrooms are taking shape. So, the way this works is, um, the random partner that you work with, um- So the way this works is the random partner that you work with, there they are with their partner that was randomly selected. They're at a whiteboard, and the problem is either projected somewhere in the classroom or it's posted right there on the whiteboard. And one student has the marker and the other student is describing what they think should happen. And so I had the opportunity to sit down with a lot of Edison teachers and talk to them about how this is going. I mean, their enthusiasm was so exciting. And I really enjoyed talking to one of our teachers that is a special education teacher, and he said he's really seeing a difference in the classroom by using these strategies because before, a lot of times, his students would sit at the desk and have a blank, you know, workbook because it was hard for them to get started. But there's something about standing at the whiteboard and then not being permanent, and that student having the marker and listening to other students gets them started. And our teachers are saying they're more engaged, they're more successful. And I know we've had some other members of our senior leadership team, Dr. Schiller, Mr. Spencer, have had the opportunity to see this in action as well. And I think, put you on the spot if you want to say anything.
I think everything you've described, the practice to be, you really see that thinking out loud at a really rich level in the classroom. So it's really, really good.
Okay, so then I'm going to show you a video. It's just two minutes in length. There were four sixth graders at Edison I had the opportunity to talk to, and so they described that experience, so. Okay, Edison's sixth graders. What do you like most about your math classroom? And so Mr. Miller's been doing some new things. What do you like about going up to the whiteboards to solve the problems?
I like to see what other people are thinking, but like how you do the problems and stuff. You know, just like, see their perspective of how they think.
What about you, Will? What do you like?
I just like, do different stuff.
So does math classroom feel different this year?
Yeah.
Because last year, you could like get to pick a partner. But like, also, there are just like, if there's like sabotage, you have to like speak up or something. But like getting to know other people, like, just to collaborate.
And it doesn't help you solve the harder problems?
Yeah.
How so?
Like a bit of mindset. Yeah. And then how, probably, like, people might have like, different perspectives. Because like, I sometimes have different perspective of other people. And even if I'm on your shit, and like, I like what we do is if you have the marker, like, I think they can be called a partner. And we tell them that you're, it's harder than.
Anything else, Dan?
No, just the marker rule is really good. And sometimes, like, Mr. Miller comes up to the board that he can't, and like, if other people are showing that they like understand a problem, but they have the marker, sometimes he helps give it. And also make it like, just good to other ideas.
Yeah, they just have people struggling to take the course. Special education, they should be able to work with.
Yeah. It really was fun to talk to these sixth graders. And, you know, they naturally just said all of this stuff. I actually, I'm sorry, I forgot it today, but I talked to a group of eighth graders too, and one of those eighth graders drew me a picture and wrote all about building thinking classrooms, just was glowing about how great it was and how much she liked math class, so. Okay, Edison's. Okay. All right, so last part. I'm going to speak about learning recovery, in particular, a study that was done, and give you some information about that. So the Education Recovery Score Card, this was a joint effort from the Center for Education Policy at Harvard and the Educational Opportunity Project at Stanford. And what it was doing, it was issuing a report on post-academic recovery from the 22-23 school year. You may remember last year, we spoke about this study. That study was done up to 2021. This is looking at how is that recovery, you know, continuing, especially this last school year? So this study includes standardized test scores from 8,000 school districts in 30 states. Illinois was one of those states. So there's a series of charts I'm going to walk you through. So this first one right here, this is interesting because it shows math and reading over an extended time period. So it goes back to 2009. It's NAEP scores. And so it shows in 2019, and then the pause in data collection, and then resuming again in 2021 and 2022. So the first report that we have spoke to the board about before, they had identified that students had lost half a year in math achievement after the pandemic and a third of a grade level in reading achievement. But overall, this study now, that's continuing to look at how students are recovering, is showing that there is recovery effort. So students have recovered a third of the loss in reading and a quarter of the loss in math in a single year. Now, we need that to be more, but these are notable gains. This is what the survey says. This is good progress. The report also ranks all of the 30 states that were included in the study. And so on the right-hand side is reading, and Illinois is actually at the top. So they say Illinois now surpasses their pre-pandemic results in reading. In math, Illinois is kind of in the middle of the pack there. The best thing about this report is you can look at, of those 30 states, you can look at individual school districts. So there is a report for in those 8,000 districts on the website. So I'm going to walk you through what it looked like for District 200. So we're going to start with math. And so this, you can see the academic achievement. And I should mention, this is about Illinois State test scores, but they equalize this by using NAEP across all of, because every state's tests are different. They use NAEP to equalize. So you can see the progress, and then you see 2019. And then you see the pause in testing, and then again, when we had a full data set in 2022. So here in District 200, we had the same results in 2022 as 2019. And I think that's important to point out. Remember the previous slide where they're set, I mentioned there was a decline in math achievement? But in District 200, we didn't see a decline. We performed the same, and I credit the fantastic teachers and the learning environment we set up. Then over last year, we actually are trending up now. The next graph, I think, is also particularly interesting because you see three sets of data here. So the first column is District 200, and then in the middle is Illinois. And then the third column, this is, they compare you to what are called similar districts. And the similar districts they've identified are not our usual comparables that we use. Instead, those similar districts they identified were St. Charles, Crystal Lake, 47, Elmhurst, Orland 135, and Lake Zurich 95. Those were the similar districts. But to orient you to this slide, what they're doing is they're placing two arrows next to each other for the 2019-2022 change and then last year's change. So District 200, like I said, we were trending the right way. We were going up in the state of Illinois. That first arrow is going down, and then this year, up. And then those similar districts, again, the first year, again, they tested, the arrow's down, and now it's up. So overall, I think it was good news for District 200 that we maintained after coming out of those disrupted years and, you know, having an arrow up here.
Is there a reason you used a different data presentation for math versus language arts?
This is still math. We're going to go to reading.
Oh, oh, oh.
No problem. This is still math. It's a deeper dive on math. One more deeper dive on math, and then we're going to do reading. So they also provide the data by subgroups. So the subgroups that they reported out on was Black, Hispanic, White, Poor, and Non-Poor. You look at the graph, it continues to tell the story of the achievement gaps. And it also shows us which subgroups are trending the right way. But I also believe this is a really important slide that shows where our work needs to be prioritized. And when we talk about our Hispanic subgroup, a lot of times, those are multilingual learners when we talk about students that they're labeling as Poor. They also come with language deficits. I do believe the strategies I just talked to you about with the MLRs and the Building Thinking Classrooms are the right ones to help our students in math. I'm going to move on to reading. Okay. Reading, same three slides set up. So here, you're going to see 2019, then when we tested again in 2022, a little uptick, but that enormous uptick this last school year, really significant. And this is like very exciting, where you see, again, remember, Illinois was at the top of the recovery, but District 200's recovery is certainly exceptional here, where you see the improvements over that one year. And then here, you see the demographic data. This paints a better picture where every one of those demographic data has that arrow trending up. So I really just want to take a moment to say, like, this is due to the wonderful work of our staff and the continuous efforts that they made during the pandemic and coming out of the pandemic, and the dedication to our students. So certainly really exciting to share this.
Is this publicly available information or subscription?
Yes. Yep. So even if you, what the report is called, the Educational Score Card, just go back and look at the technical name, the Educational Recovery Score Card, if you Google that, you'll land there.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, and there's a little spot on the website I think is particularly interesting where it says states, and then you can see every school, like, you click on Illinois and you see every school district in their report.
Since clearly I can't read charts tonight, just to confirm, this is all grades three to eight, correct?
Yes.
Is the data available for the high school level as well?
They have not done this study for that.
High school, just, there are differences across state in, one, the tests that students take and whether all students actually take a college entrance exam. So Illinois State test at the high school incorporates the college entrance exam, not all states do. All states, though, have the three-eight assessment.
Any additional questions, Board? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the last portion of our meeting is public comment. We do have one public comment, so I'm going to read our preamble. "Thank for taking time to share your feedback and thoughtful focus on our students, school district, and community. It's the Board's practice not to directly discuss communication from the community until the context is understood and information is explored. It's not our intention to signal a lack of interest, and we appreciate your understanding. Depending on the number of people sent up to speak during public comment, Board Policy 2.230 enables the time per speaker to reduce from three to two minutes, allowing more people to share their perspectives. Tonight, we will not have to do that. To maintain confidentiality, the Board asks that matters concerning personnel or students be communicated to the Board privately. When we meet, it's important to treat each other with kindness and respect. We set an example for our students and schools and desire to honor that by being courteous in our public comments. Let's work together to lead with positive intent so that our democratic process reflects the best of our community. To help us follow up if needed, please include your name and if you're a resident of the district. To ensure everyone has a chance to speak, Ms. Cullbush will raise her hand when 15 seconds remain as a reminder to wrap up your thoughts. At the end of our agreed time, I'll respectfully ask you to wrap up your comments. Thank you for investing time to attend the Board meeting tonight and share your thoughts and encouragement for our district." So with that, we have Pat McKenna. Yeah, just grab a seat and use the mic, that'd be great.
Hey, thank you, Pat McKenna, resident, yes, of the district here.
Can you hear me?
Hey. So really, what I'm here to talk about would just be your policy and asking you to reconsider the surveillance cameras that you have here. And what I mean in particular by that is the authorized users of those security cameras, right? So in the aforementioned district policy, you have those authorized cameras, right, in specific places throughout the facilities, outside buses, et cetera, right? Due to the earlier proceedings, right, in the closed session, we're well aware of the circumstances that unfolded, right? What I'm asking is, what is the auditing process? Who is accessing, what is defined by an authorized user of said footage, and who is auditing that? I think if you had better policies in place, and I don't understand the nitty-gritty of the policies or backend technology of the systems in place, but I do believe in a modern world today, in a so-called soon-to-be-or-present surveillance state, a lot of what transpired wouldn't have transpired. This waterfall or snowball effect derived from authorized personnel having access to footage and disseminating said footage, which led to the unforeseen cyberbullying of students by staff. And I do think that this was a preventable occurrence, and I'm requesting that you, moving forward, revisit this, moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. McKenna. All right, there be no further action to come before the Board an open session. Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn our meeting tonight.
Can I, I didn't sign in for a public comment. I didn't realize there was a process. I can have a lot to screen up.
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
I just want to comment to everyone. I'm a parent of a child who was affected in this incident at Monroe.
Can you listen to who you are?
Yes, my name is Rose Rivers.
Thank you.
My family and I moved here from Wayton three years ago. We left the city of Chicago, left CPS schools to give our children an excellent educational environment, a district that would provide smaller classrooms and a safe environment for them to grow. A month ago, my daughter's teacher violated her and several students' privacy by illegally obtaining security footage of her and her peers in the hallway where they were left unsupervised. He downloaded the footage to his Google Drive and edited the footage into a mocking video to shame her and her peers to teach them a lesson. When I contacted him to discuss this incident, he made an inappropriate statement to me, but my daughter, they had no correlation as to why I was contacting him. His observation of her has shaken me to my core. It was very inappropriate. I will never forget it. I'm seeking guidance regarding the safety of our students at Monroe. After approving this remedial warning given to this teacher, Mr. Hanson, allowing him to continue to teach the students he has violated, I would like an explanation or a conversation as to how our community will plan to provide a safe environment, an educational safe environment. a safe environment, an educational safe environment for our students with the presence of a teacher to shame students and exhibit his power. I ask as a parent, how everybody at this table would feel allowing a teacher displaying these behaviors to teach their child in an educational setting? I know there's a process, I understand there's investigation. I think we can all agree that a school should be a safe environment for our children to spend their day. And when a teacher imposes their power on a young girl and several young boys and manipulates situations, I think it's extremely inappropriate. I'm extremely disappointed and I hope they can understand.
Thank you, Ms. Rivers. All right, our meeting is adjourned. Do we vote? Do we say? We didn't vote yet, okay. So we have a second, a motion and a second, didn't we? Okay, Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kullwitz. Second by Mr. Long. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.